The October one, twenty twenty five, regular meeting of the Holland City Council. I'm Mayor Nathan Box, and I'm calling the meeting to order. Brenda, would you please call the roll?
Byrd.
Present.
Reiman. Raymond. Here. Corbin. Sol. Here. Rowan. Shay.
Here.
Schultheis. Mayor Box.
Present.
We do have a quorum.
Great, thank you. We are going to begin this evening's meeting, as we have for many years, first with an opening prayer this evening by City Manager Keith Van Beek, followed immediately by the Pledge of Allegiance, and we would invite you to join us.
If you would join me. Father God, we pause this night. We ask for your wisdom, your peace, your guidance, not only in this meeting, but for those that serve the city, that live in this city, but also for this nation in time of, of a lot of divisiveness and violence. We ask for your peace. So be with us in this night. It's your name we pray. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Van Beek. And Brenda, would you please note for the record that Ms. Rowan has joined us? Next item on our agenda are our consent agenda items. These are items that are considered to be fairly routine and will be enacted in one motion, unless a member of the public or a member of council asks to have the item removed from the consent agenda, and then it will be placed in its regular order on the regular agenda. But before I ask if anyone would like to do that, Brenda, would you please review the consent agenda items for us?
Okay. For A, excuse the absences of council members Reiman, Corbin, and Schultheis. Approve the minutes of the September seventeen regular meeting and September twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-twenty-five study session. For C, oath of office. For D, claims filed against the city. For E, election equipment agreement with Ottawa County. For F, set a hearing for Hudsonville Creamery and Ice Cream Company LLC for PA one ninety-eight tax abatement request. For G, approve the sponsorship contract for Holland Ice Park, the curling sheet sponsor. For H, June financial reports. For I, approve the purchase of one Ford F four fifty dump truck. For J, Office of Highway Safety Planning Traffic Grant. For K, Windmill Island Gardens approve a bid for lighting for Magic at the Mill. And for L, Windmill Island Gardens Magic at the Mill Sale of Alcohol Request.
Great, thank you, Brenda. Is there any member of the public that would like to have an item removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda? Seeing none, any member of council that would like to have an item removed from consent? Seeing none there, what is the pleasure of council in regard to the consent agenda?
Move to approve.
Move by Sol, is there support? Support, support by Rowan, any discussion? Seeing none, Brenda, would you please call the roll?
Okay, Byrd.
Yes.
Raymond? Yes. Sol?
Yes.
Rowan?
Yes.
Shay?
Yes.
And Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great, thank you. Next item on our agenda is item number five, public comment. Under the Open Meetings Act of the State of Michigan, we give the public the opportunity to address council and every single one of our board, committee, and commission meetings. We do that both in public, and we also do that through written communication. At our regular meetings, we allow five minutes. Each person may speak one time. We ask that you approach the podium and please state your name and municipality for the record. There are three lights on the dais to help you with your time. There's a red light, a yellow light, and a green light. Green light means you're doing well on time. Yellow light means that you have one minute left, and the red light means that your time has expired, and we are strict about that. You may speak on any subject that you would like to, but this is one-way communication. It's an opportunity for you to be able to address us. We don't answer questions during this time or engage in, in discussion. But if there's a question that staff can answer, they would be able to circle back to you after the meeting about that. Now, having said that, is there anyone here who would like to address council at this time? If so, please come forward. And would you please state your name and municipality for the record?
My name is Nancy Honor. I live in the city of Holland in Holland Heights. And had I known I had five minutes, I would have made this a little longer. I came tonight for two reasons. One is to advocate for retaining the existing crosswalk on Fortieth Street at the Holland Christian Athletic Fields. Second is to advocate for enhanced, the enhancement of existing crosswalks with consistent signage. My nieces and nephews all grew up in Cedar Village. With their friends, they crossed mid-block on Fortieth to go to school and to play on the fields without the benefit of a crosswalk. I applaud all of the enhanced crosswalks in downtown and at Hope College, including the two new mid-block crossings on Columbia. Residents requesting better signage at crosswalks in their neighborhood are often met with a no because of an official concern of creating a false sense of security for pedestrians. Creating a simple city policy of consistent signage to include stop for pedestrians, state law, enforcement of the state law, and adding driver responsibility in equal measure would help change the culture of car as king. Just because current signage meets the minimum required by Michigan Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Device Standards doesn't and shouldn't mean we can't do better. Please keep the Fortieth Street Crossing with consistent enhanced signage. Mid-block crossings are a proven cost-effective vehicle traffic intervention that improves safety and accessibility. At intersections where pedestrians are competing with vehicles for the same green light and also at stoplights, it creates a real problem. By reinforcing driver responsibilities and designing our crossings based on human behavior can significantly reduce injuries and deaths while building a desired more walkable community as supported in our non-motorized transportation plan. The references I used for this were our non-motorized transportation plan, the Federal Highway Administration, National Highway Safety Traffic Administration, American Association of State Highway and Transportation Officials, the Uniform Vehicle Code for Crosswalks, and driver yield responsibilities. If anybody would like more information, I'd be happy to provide it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time? Please come forward. And you're one of our HyAC students, aren't you?
I am, I'm part of the Recreation Committee.
Wonderful, and I have a few extra things that you have to do for us. One, again, you have to give us your name, but we also would, would like to know what school you go to, what you're doing Recreation Committee, thank you, and if you have any plans for the future.
My name is Miles Stock. I'm a junior at Holland Christian, and I have aspirations to go into medicine one day.
Wonderful, great.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. The reason I'm speaking is because of an idea that I think would create a positive impact on the community in more than one way. But first, I'd like to start with a story. When I was eleven years old and the COVID pandemic was at its peak, I taught myself how to woodwork, something I continue to this day. I wouldn't change a thing about that learning experience, except for the fact that I had no one to teach me. That brings me to my idea. I propose that once a week after school, seniors at Evergreen Commons volunteer their time to teach high schools, high schoolers how to woodwork. I think this is a good idea because it would promote a cross-generational community, and it would benefit both the students and the seniors. The students would get to learn new skills from knowledgeable people, and the seniors would get to teach a skill which they enjoy. The unfortunate truth is that there aren't many opportunities to learn how to woodwork besides school, the tech center, or a family member. If you aren't able to take a shop class or don't have a family member that can teach you, you can't learn woodworking for pleasure, trade, or at bare minimum just for the wood, woodshop safety skills. It's common knowledge that there aren't enough people in the trades at the moment, and this program might give kids the basic skills to pursue a trade like carpentry or construction if they so choose, and thus possibly fill the trades gap. Kids might also find that wood is a creative medium that they enjoy, but never had the opportunity to work with. Finally, and most importantly, a study from the National Library of Medicine states that forty-five minutes of producing art prompts a significant lowering of the stress hormone cortisol. In a world full of stressed-out students, a little bit of woodworking could help them be less stressed. Evergreen is the perfect place for this program because they have not only a complete woodshop, but also people who have the time to teach younger students if they choose to. The next steps for this plan could be gauging interest at Evergreen Commons and then making flyers or advertising this program on social media to reach high school students. Thank you, Mayor Box, and each of you on City Council for your service and for taking the time to listen to me talk about how woodworking at Evergreen Commons could benefit students in the Holland community.
Great, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time? Please come forward. And would you please state your name and municipality for the record?
Yeah, hi, I'm Ken Thomas. I live in, in the city of Holland. I too just wanted to talk with you briefly about the Fortieth Street Crossing. I agree with everything that's been said so far. I was surprised, as a board member of Cobblestone, as I shared on our website, that so many people responded. We had like fifteen people say, oh my goodness, don't, don't take the crosswalk. But they brought some concerns that I wasn't aware of, and that is that there's a lot of concern about the four-way stop at the end of Fortieth and Grass Cup. And there have been about four accidents in the last school year there, and people are avoiding it as a pedestrian crossing. They cited to me several instances where someone was trying to cross the street with their dog or take their kids to school, and all the cars will be stopped. A driver will wave the pedestrian on, and then someone rapidly turns that corner onto Fortieth. So people have started using, or have been using, that mid-street crossing because they feel it's safer than actually crossing at the corner right now. So there is a problem, though. You're absolutely correct, it's not marked properly. There are no lines there. The signage isn't appropriate. It doesn't meet the normal city standard for those things, you know, what we see in other places. Over a year ago, someone in our neighborhood brought this up to the city for attention, and you're probably aware of that, and it may even be what's driving the action there. And there was some question about, how did the crosswalk get there? Why wasn't it, you know, put together the right way in the beginning? And it may have something to do with the fact that it's a fire entrance for our development. There's a second entrance required for, you know, fire safety, right? And that's why that whole big driveway is in there. That's why it's cut down, you know, for the curbing there, and there's, there's access there. So that would remain. So obviously, there's this path to the neighborhood. It goes right to the two schools. It goes to all the playgrounds. The kids have been using it for twenty years. So we would just also ask, appeal to you that, you know, you, you keep the crosswalk and that you guys look at maybe beefing it up to, you know, the kind of standards we, we see around the rest of the town. Thanks.
Great, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time? Please come forward. And you're also one of our HyAC students.
I am.
Welcome.
My name is Reagan Bestman. I go to Black River, and I'm part of the Environmental Committee, and I plan to pursue aerospace engineering.
Great.
Thank you all so much for giving us this opportunity. So I am delegation leader for my school's Youth and Government Program, which is what I'm here to talk to you about. For those of you who don't know, Michigan Youth and Government, or MEIG, is a program where students get the opportunity to learn about the legislative process. We write bills, develop press releases, and have debates about issues that are important to us. All year, we prepare for our conference in Lansing. At this conference, we meet with students from other schools around the state who are also interested in the governmental process. We have meaningful debate and discuss the future of our state. We get the opportunity to build lasting connections, some of my closest friends I have met during this conference, and we build the confidence to share our ideas. We even get to have real debate on the floor of the Capitol Building. For the past five years, we have received a grant from the state. This grant helped cover some of the cost of conference, ensuring that many students who would not be able to afford it could still attend. This year, however, with the state budget for the year still up for debate, the grant is at risk. Without this money, the cost of conference goes from one hundred dollars per student to five hundred and fifty. In order to raise enough money to bring the cost down to its previous level, my delegation would have to raise over twenty thousand dollars. MEIG is such an important opportunity, and I'm hoping that City Council may be able to help ensure students in the Black River and Holland High MEIG delegations get to attend this conference. Thank you so much for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time? Please come forward. And would you please state your name and municipality for the record?
Hi, I'm Grace Millizer. I'm with Kraft Heinz in Holland. So dear Holland City Council, please accept this letter in regard to the notice of proposed traffic changes for this meeting today. Kraft Heinz, originally Heinz, has been a part of our community for a hundred and twenty-eight years, and our leadership team at the Holland facility wants to continue our strong partnership with the city of Holland and show our commitment to our community, as well as our employees, that safety is paramount. The staff at Kraft Heinz Holland are in favor of both of the changes of the always-stop at the intersection of Ottawa Avenue and Sixteenth Street, as well as the parking restrictions along the north side of Sixteenth Street, the hundred and fifty feet east of that intersection. Both of these changes will help not only our employees at Kraft Heinz, but also our community. The no parking on the Sixteenth Street will provide a better line of sight to the pedestrian crosswalks. The always-stop will slow individuals down as they approach those pedestrian crosswalks. We would like to also propose two additional items regarding this area on the topic of traffic changes. We would like the city of Holland to install additional streetlights and the pedestrian crosslights and signs as installed like on Ninth Street over by Hope College, but both of those fluorescent lights and those flashing lights for added visibility. We would also like to request traffic control presence from our law enforcement officers around our standard shift changes to help monitor those not yielding to the pedestrian right of way. For reference, Kraft Heinz employees, on average, cross the street two thousand five hundred times a day. The, that is, two thousand, or two thousand five hundred times someone could be struck by a motor vehicle. In one year, that is almost one million crossings on that one crosswalk alone, let alone all of our other community members that cross. So we look forward to the opportunity of working with you. Can I submit this to the clerk?
Leave it with the clerk, please. Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time? Please come forward. And would you please state your name and municipality for the record?
Yes. My name is Jody Miller, and I actually currently live in Sparta. But my lifelong devotion for the city of Holland comes from the fact that I was born and raised here, graduated from Holland High School, have family who still live here, and, most notably, I'm a third generation of the only noted and documented four-generation Dutch dance family for the city. My grandmother Dutch danced in the thirties, my mom in the fifties, me in the seventies, and my daughter in the two thousands, and we still do alumni Dutch dance today. But I'm not here today to brag about my heritage. I am here to dispute the comments that were made by the mayor during his blog concerning the Civic Center and its availability and affordability, affordability, sorry, to the people of Holland. You see, I am also the president of the Tulip City Gem and Mineral Club, a club that began under the REC Department of the Holland City in nineteen sixty-seven. In nineteen seventy, we held our first annual rock and gem club at the Civic Center, and our relationship with the city and the Civic Center was so strong that we were allowed to leave our materials and our equipment in the basement at the Civic Center in between our shows each year. We knew the renovations were necessary. We saw the flooding. We had materials that were flooded out. And we went to the meetings to find out what was going to happen with the Civic Center, and were assured that it would remain accessible to the organizations that held their yearly events there and clubs that remain to this day. But we were leery, and now we're finding for good reason. In twenty twenty-four, after our last show, we had moved to a new location while the renovation was taking place. Several members of the club came up to me and asked if I would pursue again the ability to be at the Civic Center, and I gladly took on that task. I made a reservation to take a tour of the Civic Center with the management company, and when we arrived, we were dismayed to find that the people who were working that day did not know anything about our tour. But they were very kind, and they took us around anyway and showed us the building. But they also told us the many things that would not be available like we used to be when we came, when we would come back. For example, we would not be able to bring our own food. The people who volunteer for our show stay the entire time, and so we often gave them sandwiches or light snacks or whatever, and we were told that we would only be able to use the catering service that was contracted with the Civic Center. We, so we also were excited to see that there was a discount for nonprofits that was on the website. The woman who was taking us around told us that the new management company had decided that that was no longer going to be available. So we asked the question, what was the cost for the Civic Center? And we were told it was four thousand dollars per day. Our show is a three-day show with a one-day setup, which means our show would cost us sixteen thousand dollars. I looked up that International Cultural Festival that was mentioned. The festival has over fifteen corporate and charitable organizations that sponsor that festival. I have no doubt, since if they are given the same amount, the four thousand dollar fee that we were quoted, there's no way that a nonprofit or a five oh one C three business could afford to have a festival at that cost. Our club charges five dollars per adult, and all children are free. We are considered a very friendly family event, and the money we raise goes to scholarships for Hope College students, Grand Valley students, and high school seniors so that they can pursue degrees in the sciences. If we had to pay sixteen thousand dollars to, for the venue, there is no way we would make money to be able to give, give those scholarships, and in fact, we would lose money. I understand that there is a balance between public and private use, but I looked up on the site what the events for October were, and there are three listed currently. A Taylor Swift parter for two hours on the fifth, bingo loco on the twenty-fourth, and a line dance workshop. Thankfully, while I was pursuing this and finding out that there was no way that we would be able ever to go back to the Civic Center as we had started many, many years ago, I found out that the Holland Township...
Mr. Mayor, that is five minutes. I'm sorry, your time has expired.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time? Yes, please come forward. And would you please state your name and municipality for the record?
Hi, Don Smaringa, City of Holland. Three additional traffic, in other words, street and light requests for council-level consideration. The first is at the intersection of Sixteenth, Seventeenth, and South Shore. It's an oblique angle. Most older people can turn their necks about ninety degrees. You got to do a hundred and twenty-plus. Request was made to the Transportation Department in two thousand fourteen, and again in two thousand twenty-five, to tee up that intersection. I request that you look at that for additional consideration. Secondly, at the corner of Twenty-Fourth Street and Waverly Road, rather large complexes going in, in addition to the dog park already there, there's concerns been raised about the ability of that two-lane road to handle the traffic and the additional significant traffic that will be forthcoming. I request you look at that again for consideration. Third item is lighting. Request has been made and acted upon to create some downward shield for the lighting at the Nrelty Down Park, Dog Park. However, that lighting is still bothersome to people trying to sleep at night across the street. So I'm requesting council-level action to consider yet improved downward lighting of the Dog Park and the parking lot both. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time? And you too are one of our HyAC students.
Yes, I am. So my name's Abby Price, and I'm a junior at West Ottawa, and I serve on the Social Services Committee for HyAC. Today, I would like to share about the positive impact of REC youth sports because I think there's some really great recreational programs in the Holland area. So I grew up participating in many of these REC sports through these local programs, and I believe that many of the qualities that I currently have as an athlete developed from these programs. For example, I gained problem-solving and communication skills, as well as my competitive drive and my sportsmanship qualities. Although I only play one sport now, which is tennis, the numerous, the numerous athletic opportunities that the youth sports programs provided allowed me to explore my interests and gave me new skills that made me a better overall athlete. The ability to try out various sports is not just applicable to me, but also to the many young athletes that live in the Holland area thanks to the recreational programs. These REC programs do not require the same intensity and commitment as club and travel teams, so kids are just able to dip their toes in the water and test out the sports that they like without having to be committed and pay the expenses of a club or travel team. The REC sports programs in Holland are also relatively accessible to most families, which overall increases participation, and this affordability lets kids try out many different sports rather than having to stick to one sport that's really expensive. I think the Holland area is very lucky to have multiple youth sports programs because it gives kids the opportunity to participate in many sports, explore their interests, and learn new skills. And just like me, it helps them become a more well-rounded athlete. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time? Would you please state your name and municipality for the record?
Nate Younglove, and I represent WM Uniform in the city of Holland. I'm here to talk about the proposed always-stop at Sixteenth and Ottawa. WM Uniform has operated at that location for sixty-two years, and safety is always our top priority for our team, and we recognize the intent behind adding the always-stop. At the same time, the proposed change will directly affect how we unload our trucks every day. The process has been in place for decades, and is a critical part of our daily operations. If this change moves forward, which we will need to completely restructure how and where trucks unload, that will involve rerouting, redesigning our plant floor, traffic flow, and creating new procedures for our team. These adjustments are possible, but they will take time to implement. So we respectfully ask the council to consider an adjustment period before implementation so we can prepare properly and avoid disruptions to our operations.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time? Yes, please come forward. And would you please state your name and municipality for the record?
Hi, my name is Luis Riz. I actually live in Holland Township, and I would like to express support for the Fortieth Street Crosswalk. I cross Eagle Crest on my commute to work, and I would just think, I think that relates to the Fortieth Street Crosswalk because I would never take a crosswalk away from Eagle Crest. Those children have the right to walk to and from school from their neighborhood. So I just think that connecting a neighborhood to Holland Christian is just as equally important to Eagle Crest, so that's it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time? And would you please state your name and municipality for the record?
I'm Margaret. I live in downtown Holland. Also about the Fortieth Street Crosswalk, that I think it's really important to encourage pedestrian access when and wherever we can. While many people do have cars, not everyone does. We want to make walking, biking, bus routes as accessible as possible, both for just people to live their lives for environmental reasons, to allow community interaction for people who aren't old enough to have driver's licenses or unable to have driver's licenses. So I... So I think it's important to maintain that crosswalk. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time? And would you please state your name and municipality for the record?
Yeah, hi. My name is Becca Holly Lowry. I live in the East Core neighborhood of Holland, pretty close to Centennial Park. I would like to express my displeasure at the recommendation of the removal of the crosswalk, the mid-block crosswalk on Forty Street and advocate for its maintenance and that it not only stays there, but that it gets improved by the city. It's right across from a school. I feel like that should be enough. But additionally, a quarter-mile walk, which is about the distance from the mid-block crosswalk to the, like guided, or the crosswalks at either intersection. A quarter mile is nothing for people who are in a car or on a bike or who don't deal with mobility issues. For anyone who deals with mobility issue, whether it's a disabled person who lives in nearby neighborhoods, whether it is a disabled child or their family members who go to the schools nearby, that quarter mile can make or break somebody's day if they have mobility issues. Instead, I would suggest making the crosswalk safer, lights and signage, like on Ninth Street, the mid-block crossings on Ninth Street. And I would also suggest lowering the speed limit, not that people generally stick to those, so enforcement of that speed limit. And, and/or making Forty, Forty Street itself narrower, which slows cars down. I would hate to see this happen to more crosswalks in the city, and I worry that if this crosswalk is allowed to be removed, that it would open the door for more crosswalks, like ones that are being proposed on Sixteenth or other mid-block crosswalks, that they, you know, it would open the door for those to be removed. I would really hate to see that happen, and I am begging the city to protect pedestrians and people who don't have driver's licenses. This city would be better for everyone if it were even more accessible to pedestrians. One of the things that I talk to or talk about loving about Holland is how walkable generally it is. And, yeah, I would just really encourage you to maintain that crosswalk and improve it. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time? And you are also one of our HyAC students?
Yes, I am. My name's Adley Field, and I'm an eleventh grader at West Ottawa. I also serve on the Recreation Committee, and I'm looking to go into occupational therapy. Good evening, members of the City Council. Tonight, I wanted to speak from the heart about something I'm truly passionate about, my Schools Links program. For those of you who are unfamiliar with West Ottawa's Links program, Links is a peer-to-peer mentor program where students like me get to form friendships and connections with students who have disabilities. It's offered as an elective class, but it's so much more than just a class. It's my favorite part of the day. From second grade through today, I've been blessed to build many close relationships and friendships through this program. Through Links, I've grown in patience, communication, kindness, inclusivity, awareness, and advocacy, and flexibility. It's not about learning math formulas or grammar rules, it's about learning real-life skills and building relationships that matter. What makes this program so special is the way it brings our entire school together. We've done numerous things from hosting unified soccer tournaments to school-wide assemblies and even spirit weeks dedicated to inclusion. We even do the polar plunge at our school to raise money for Special Olympics. What's really amazing is most of these events are student-led or organized and have a high participation from our student body. They aren't just fun activities, they make inclusion something our school celebrates. The Links program also does an amazing job in preparing its students for the real world. Twice a week during Fifth and Sixth Hour, the students participate and work-study at places like Goodwill, Russ's, and Family Fair. These experiences not only teach valuable life and job skills, but also help the stu- but also help build relationships that the students can use and lead to future employment opportunities. On Fridays, we also take community outings and field trips like navigating Christmas shopping downtown or visiting apartments to practice budgeting and independence and everyday life skills. The program also includes functional life classes where students learn to cook and do laundry. We even prepare and share, share a full Thanksgiving meal before, before break. To me, Links represents what the best of education should be. It prepares students whether in general education or special education for the real world. It creates a culture of inclusion, acceptance, and friendship that goes way beyond the classroom. And it's not just at West Ottawa. Programs like Camp Sunshine, Maggie B's Cafe, Unified Sports, and Hope College's Ready-for-Life Program show how our community is leading the way in promoting inclusion and empowerment. I believe programs like Links should be the standard, not the exception, and feel lucky to be in a community that agrees. I'm so grateful to be a part of it, and I hope that you guys, as leaders of our city, will continue to support and encourage opportunities for inclusion and accessibility across our schools and community. Thank you for your time and for supporting students like me and making Holland a place where everyone is valued and belongs.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time? And would you please state your name and municipality for the record?
Hello, I'm Daniel Holly Lowry in the City of Holland. Members of council, I come before you tonight to address a particular item and will also use this to exhortate the causation of this issue. Directly, I am here to join the resounding call to reject the utterly backwards proposal regarding removal of the pedestrian mid-block crossing on Forty Street. As has already been presented to you another comment, this process was initiated as a result of citizen requests for improvement. In what way does elimination serve as improvement? Indeed, much of the communication already presented to council suggests straightforward solution-oriented paths forward, such as improve paint and signage, minor tree trimmings for sightlines, and the implementation of RRFDs as on Ninth Street. Instead, we are held captive to an unelected closed meeting holding Unaccountable Traffic Committee who seem to spend more time developing excuses for detrimental decisions than ever actually considering real solutions. To reiterate a portion of Mr. White's report to you directly, as of Wednesday, October first, at eight AM, sixteen email comments, one letter, and one phone call have been received in opposition to the proposed traffic change. It is recommended City Council approve the proposed traffic change. How asinine.
Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time? And would you please state your name and municipality for the record?
Anne Henrickson Zeeland. Saturday, September twenty-seventh was a gorgeous day for events at the International Festival at the Civic Center and unique worship and prayer at Colin Park Band Shell, perfect weather and temperature. I would like to thank Esther Fefleski for her admirable work of perfection way past her pay grade. She brings an atmosphere of dignity to everyone she meets and to every situation she's involved in. She reminds me of Nancy DeBoer. Last week, when I left the study session, I was able to speak with her. She was very weary and spent. My heart went out to her. I told her that it is her strong integrity that makes this city look so wonderful to live in. She goes beyond everyone, anyone else. She purely, purely loves people and service. She can never be replaced. She is a legacy of grace. The Colin Park Band Shell event Shine the Light in Holland was amazing with people driving by, stopping and joining in. It was an intergenerational, non-denominational, and every ethnicity was something to offer in a unique worship and prayer venue so that all would be welcome, as the mayor would say. The objective is to have availability to anyone who may never set a foot in a church setting. The events are outside the church walls for the faith experience in an invitational setting. The Crossroad Christian Motorcycle Organization and Love Your Neighbor Ministry plus others were available to visit with those who came. Many questioned the lack of use of the stage, and our reply was, it belongs to the city and we're not permitted to use it. That brought a puzzled look. The National April Faith Month Action Organization Incorporated hosted this event, and they did, as they did, the National Day of Prayer at Holland Civic Center in May. This organization brings events to Holland and surrounding areas to support churches and other faith events. They helped get the word out about Tuesday's Winning at Home Celebration of Christ at the Civic Center place, where staff went out of their way to welcome one thousand seven hundred people with the Polar Patrol, hot dogs and chips and snacks. The sound of worship was one that had never been heard in Holland before. God was pleased. Since Charlie Kirk's murder for his faith, the people of Holland are changing to see the value of their faith as bold and expressive. Things will change. I want to thank Andy Kenyon and Jamie of the Parks and Recreation Department for their exceptional courtesy to the committee of our program on the twenty-seventh. A member who had reserved the park space, they came to them and they showed us the electrical accesses and explained the open bathrooms, picnic tables, accessibility, and et cetera. The committee decided we may need the lights turned on in the amphitheater because of the rapid nightfall, so we needed tra- we also needed trash receptacles located near the food areas. Mr. Kenyon and Kara Sanchez Prince were out of town, and it seemed no one had the authority to speak to our representative's request. She was finally given the city clerk, who disappointedly gave her this uncooperative answer that she had no record of Shine the Light in Holland event. The clerk said that she contacted Jamie, and he said those issues of amphitheater lights and trash receptacles had been already addressed. They had not. It was disappoint, a disappointing experience and not well-representative of the park and recreation, recreation and the City of Holland. No one should be treated with disinterest. We are refused use of the Colin Park Band Shell, but also discounted in this manner, not only by this council, but also the clerk. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time? And would you please state your name and municipality for the record?
I am Russ Burley. I live in Holland. I'm actually fortunate enough to live on Forty Street, right next to the crosswalk. That's under consideration. If anybody is aware of that, I sit outside a lot in the backyard, and I see the pedestrians trying to use that crosswalk. I've actually, sounds kind of funny, but I've gotten up out of my lawn chair and gone out just to help children cross the stop because people won't stop for them, no matter how long they wait. It's, it's, the speed limit is not thirty-five, it's like forty-five or fifty. There's a lot of traffic on Forty. I, I would like to see them, I would like to see the city keep the crosswalk, make some upgrades to it, maybe some flashing yellow signs that are solar-powered, possibly push-button activated or something that's simple to use, like on a timer that would just work for the, letting the drivers know that there are people trying to cross that. I agree with almost like everything that was been said about it, that walking a quarter mile each direction, I think if you remove the crosswalk, I think the children will still cross there regardless. They're, that's what they're used to. It's close to the baseball fields, it's close to the football field, and you can get to any school from, if you'd use that crosswalk. I've heard tires squeal. I've, I've looked outside dreading what I see if someone was to get hit on that crosswalk. It's scary, but I think with proper signage, lighting, and other apparatuses that that could be made safe. And so I just, I would encourage the city to find a way to make it safe and light it up and put some stripes on the ground, because I don't believe that crosswalk has any white-painted hash marks on the ground like some of the other ones I've seen. So it is, it is like a bad location because of the proximity of the middle of the, the road, but I think it can be improved enough to be a safe crosswalk for the pedestrians. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time? Seeing none, I will close the public comment period. Next item on the agenda, item number seven, Special Order of the Day, Public Hearings. Seven, a Downtown Principal Shopping District Assessment to adopt a resolution of necessity for the fiscal year twenty-six, Principal Shopping District Assessment, and to adopt a resolution scheduling a hearing on the final assessment for October fifteen, twenty-twenty-five. Mr. Van Beek?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. Council members, maybe some members of the public that have been at recent meetings, this might seem like Groundhog Day. And Groundhog Day because this process for the Principal Shopping District Assessment, the snowmelt assessment, and the parking operation and maintenance assessment, which are the three next items, there's a three-step process every year that we do, and this middle process here, like, didn't we just do this, Keith? And the answer is, yes, you did. However, there was a notification timing error with putting that out in the Sentinel, I believe. So in order to make sure that we did it legally, we get to do this step again. We certainly have the staff here that can present once again the entire methodology that we use and the description of what this is. It is part of the taped meeting of the past, but again, more than happy to either have staff do it or me give a super quick overview of each of them, but you will need to take action on each of these individually tonight.
I, I think for the benefit of the people that are here that may not have been here before, Keith, just at least a brief overview of what each one of these is, because we're going to be doing a public hearing on each one of these, and I think that we want to make sure that the public that is here has, knows what it is that they may have the opportunity to speak about.
I heard a middle ground there, so I'll give an executive summary, and staff that are here can answer any questions and can correct if I make any errors because they do the direct work and then I manage a whole bunch of things, but I'm not an expert in all of it. So this first one is the Downtown Principal Shopping District Assessment. One of the things that just I think a lot of people don't realize is that all of the extras in downtown, and in this case, the Principal Shopping District, does events, does promotional-type things, and basically just works on behalf of all of the businesses downtown to make that a strong area. They assess themselves, those businesses, through a board that exists of those owners, and then they go through a process of defining what that assessment will be based upon square footages in those businesses. In this case, they unanimously, that board are presenting to you the assessments that are in the, in your packet. And the action tonight, I'm just making sure, is to adopt a reg, a resolution and schedule a hearing on the final assessment on October fifteen, twenty-twenty-five. So there's a public hearing that night, but there is also a public hearing tonight on this item.
Any questions for staff? All right. Then I will open a public hearing on this item. The same rules apply as in our regular public, public comment section, except that you may only speak on this particular item. Is there anyone here who would like to address council in regard to the Principal Shopping District Assessment? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. What is the pleasure of council in regard to this item?
Move to approve?
Second.
Move, move by Raymond, support by Shay. Any discussion? Seeing none, Brenda, which please call the roll.
Raymond, yes. Sol, yes. Rowan?
Yes.
Shay?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Great, thank you. That goes a little faster when we're doing it a second time. Item 7B, Downtown Snowmelt Operations and Maintenance Assessment, to adopt a resolution of necessity for the annual Downtown Snowmelt Operations and Maintenance Assessment, and adopt a resolution scheduling a hearing on final assessment for October 15. Mr. Van Beek?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll assume we'll go with the executive summary version again. Jeff Genovis here could present and answer more questions. Downtown snowmelt, the operations and maintenance, similar thing. All of the property owners downtown, again, a little bit different if you're fronting it, if you're second story and those types of things, but there's a series of policies that basically determines what the perlineal foot that you pay if you own property downtown. This one is a little bit different in the Principal Shopping District, where the city owns quite a bit of property in the downtown area, so we are also assessed in, in this process. And then that money is set aside not only to go back and pay still some of the original construction costs of this system, but then definitely there's ongoing operation maintenance costs that this covers also. I will say there was a public comment on here. I'm paraphrasing, saying Hope College should pay for Downtown Snowmelt Assessment, and as the documentation in it shows, Hope College does pay appropriately, and I don't, they, they are not here to contest it, that I'm aware of tonight, but they, they do pay into that snowmelt assessment like other property owners and stakeholders downtown.
Great, thank you. Questions? All right, I will open the public hearing in regard to this item. Is there anyone here who would like to address council in regard to this particular item? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing in regard to this item. What is the pleasure of council?
I move to approve.
Moved by Shay, is there support?
Support.
Support by Sol, any discussion? Seeing none, Brenda, which please call the roll.
Sol, yes. Rowan?
Yes.
Shay?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Raymond, yes. Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Thank you.
Item 7C, Downtown Parking Operations and Maintenance Assessment, to adopt a resolution of necessity for the annual Downtown Parking Operations and Maintenance Assessment, and adopt a resolution scheduling a hearing on final assessment for October 15, 2025. Again, Mr. Van Beek?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Again, we quite often talk about, I should advance these slides. There's PSD, there's snowmelt, all right, parking. That depicts the area that actually participates in paying towards this parking operation and maintenance assessment. You know, I think a lot of people that don't actually live in this area and pay this assessment, we quite often talk about, and, and people are very happy that we have free parking downtown Holland, and somewhat tongue-in-cheek, we always say, "There's free parking downtown Holland," but it isn't free, because there is a cost that comes with it, not only for the property that's utilized, but also the amenities that have been added over the years, the parking decks, but then also the parking lots, the maintenance of those parking lots, in some cases leasing those parking lots from other private entities not owned by the city. So same thing, this is something where there's a board that goes through, through this, takes a look at it every year, takes a look at the amount of money that's needed, and then assesses upon themselves a fee in order to keep this system up and operational. It's a unanimous recommendation that comes to you, and we usually don't have anyone here to contest it. We'll see if we do have here momentarily, but again, this is one of those systems that we do each year that I think a lot of people don't realize that happens, but it's pretty key to the operations of our downtown.
All right. Any questions for staff? Again, goes pretty quickly when this is our second go-around on this same item. All right, I'm going to open the public hearing in regard to this particular item. Is there anyone here from the public who would like to address council in regard to this particular item? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. What is the pleasure of council in regard to this item?
Move to approve.
Moved by Raymond, is there support?
Support.
Support by Sol, any discussion? Seeing none, Brenda, which please call the roll.
Rowan?
Yes.
Shay?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Sol?
Yes.
Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Great, thank you.
Next item on the agenda, item number eight, Unfinished Business, 8A, Traffic Changes. Recommendation for an always-stop at 16th Street and Ottawa Avenue. Mr. Van Beek?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. I'm, I'm going to have Transportation Director Brian White come up and join me, and you'll see that there's a slide in front of you first, deals with the next three topics on your agenda, and a lot of comment that had. Thank you for those comments. I will say that a reminder, and I hope that people realize this and focus upon where there might be different policy interpretations or thoughts on implementing safety, just a reminder, and I will support Transportation Director White and the other people on the Traffic Committee, that we are all, I believe, looking for the same thing, which is safety. Sometimes there's different opinions on how to achieve that safety, but just encourage everyone to, to remember that. Brian and his team are also the ones, a lot of the things that, that we've received praise for tonight are the non-motorized traffic plan, and a lot of the bike lanes, and the different things that we've put in, and Brian has been very involved in championing a lot of those types of things. So just a reminder, we can debate policy, but that we're all looking for the same thing, which is safety. So Brian, I think you're first going to just talk about the Traffic Committee in general, and then we've got three specific items that you'll walk us through.
Yeah, okay, thanks, Keith. Good evening, Mayor Box, council members, members of the public. First, if I could just start out, this generally applies to all three of these items. The three items have been brought to council at the prior meeting. They're traffic-related in nature, and as we do with all those traffic items, we basically postpone any decision on those so that we have the opportunity to notify the area property owners that are affected by that, and they have an opportunity for comment. So, so that's a good process, and that's good, it's working. Couple of things with regard to the Traffic Committee in general. It is a staff-level committee that meets regularly, and it basically reviews all things that are brought to the city related to traffic. The committee consists of several members from different departments, the Police Department, Community and Neighborhood Services, Planning, Engineering, our Streets Department, the guys that actually put the, the signs in the ground and the paint on the streets, and then our DDA are downtown. So basically, I, I just want to reiterate what Keith said, safety is always the centerpiece of those Traffic Committee discussions. Different departments bring different points of view to the discussion, and we value all those different points. So with that, if we could move to the first item. So this is the always-stop at 16th Street and Ottawa, and basically, the intersection there with the Heinz driveway to the north, Ottawa Avenue to the south, and then 16th Street's east-west through there. And so what we're proposing with this recommendation is to always stop this intersection. It would include some realignment with the driveway, but then also some parking prohibitions as you leading, basically leading into the intersection from the east for that westbound traffic. And basically, what that's trying to do is preserve some lines of sight there, particularly for the pedestrian movements, right, that we anticipate to occur there. So in talking with the gentleman from West Michigan Uniform, I think it may be appropriate to, to delay this, to give us an opportunity to work with the West Michigan Uniform folks. It does sound like there's a couple of things that, that may be possible there, but I guess I would like to just explore that with him before we make a decision on, on moving forward with this, so. I guess that would be my, my thought for this first one.
Are you recommending that we table this item?
I am, yeah. I'd like the opportunity to, to work with the West Michigan gentleman there and see if we can come up with a, a solution that, that works.
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion to table this particular item, if that's...
I think, I think we want to get a ruling from City Attorney here.
Yeah, can we, can we table?
We're going to make sure that we do this correctly.
Sorry, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think a postponement is something that was done last time, and you can postpone without saying the date, or you can postpone to a specific meeting date. There's also, if there is a motion to table, once that's made, it's not debated, and it's, it has to be voted on once that motion is made.
The, the motion to table has, doesn't have debate?
Correct.
Okay. And the motion to, the motion to table does not have to be, be brought back to a date certain, correct?
Correct. But there would have to then be a later motion, obviously, to remove something from the table.
Okay.
If you, you can postpone.
So what you're saying is simpler to postpone, simpler to bring it back onto the agenda if we postpone it than if we table it?
There, there would be less actions, less votes probably to do that, that's correct.
In the interest of efficiency, I, I motion to postpone this item.
All right. We've got a motion from Rowan to postpone this item?
I second that.
Second by Shay, is, any discussion?
Do we want to add, make it clear upon Brian's conversation with WM, what is it?
West Michigan Uniform?
West Michigan Uniform, do we want to add that to it?
No.
Okay.
The thought would be, I think we'd bring it back at the next one. I, I think we'll try and see what we can work through and, and at least provide an update.
Ms. Raymond?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you. I saw you hop up and follow him out, and I appreciate you connecting with him immediately.
Yeah, unfortunately, we weren't able to design it on the fly there, so...
Of course not. Well, maybe you could have.
Right.
No, but I appreciate you doing that, that's really very, that's great.
Great. Any other discussion?
I haven't...
Yes, Ms. Rowan?
And I, I also agree with your observations, and when that gentleman came up to speak, I think it, it really does bear some redesign, because those trucks, I, I pass that every day on the way to work, that intersection or that area, and they, their trucks are always in the roadway, unloading. It's incredibly unsafe, it's inefficient for the tra, the car traffic, certainly the, the folks that are coming in and out of the factory, the Heinz factory, as well as West Michigan, but the Heinz factory really gets a lot of traffic. So it's, to me, I think it's an excellent idea to find a solution whereby they don't have to redesign their entire plant, hopefully, but in the interest of safety, I think it, some discussion is necessary, so thank you.
Yeah, great, great.
Wonderful. Any other discussion? All right, Brenda, which please call the roll on the motion to postpone.
Shay?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Sol?
Yes.
Rowan?
Yes.
Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Great, thank you. Next item under unfinished business, item 8B, Traffic Changes, Parking Restriction in Alleyway Adjacent to Ninth Street Parking Deck. Mr. Van Beek?
Transportation Director White is next to me, he'll take this item.
Okay, so the next item here has to do with an alleyway next to the Ninth Street Parking Deck. So Pine Avenue is shown there on the left side of the screen. Ninth Street is at the bottom of the screen, Ninth Street Parking Deck there, as shown. And basically what the proposal is, and this was received from the DDA, the DDA had some discussions with folks down here about this. So there's a couple of things that happen. One, in the wintertime, our snow removal operation actually blows snow off of the deck into this alleyway as a, a maintenance practice for winter, winter operations. In addition, though, there's a fair amount of delivery truck movements that occur through here, and that's why, one, we're looking at it basically year-round, but then, two, looking at both sides of the, of the alleyway there, to basically facilitate those truck delivery movements, but then also in the wintertime to help with that winter ma, maintenance operation. Understand that as this area develops, that may change, but for this period of time, we think that this is the, the best way forward with regard to the, the parking restrictions that we're proposing.
Any questions for staff? I, I guess, Brian, I, I have a question. I was not aware that this was public right-of-way in there. I, I always assumed that this was private property, but this is...
Yeah, there's actually an easement, it's a public easement.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, yeah, because there's, there are often vehicles parked in there or stopped and standing in there, I just assumed that that was not public right-of-way, it's good to know. Mr. Bird?
So in the summertime, or I guess during the time when there's no snow, trucks use that area, right?
Yeah, the, delivery trucks do.
Okay, what, what, what is the plan when there is snow? Because snow's coming off of the parking garage, so I guess, where do they go now?
Yeah, so, you know, they do navigate through here, but I think this will facilitate those movements, and again, particularly in the wintertime. So, and I, I don't know necessarily if there's a lot of parking that occurs on that side furthest away from the parking deck to begin with, but we're just going to be putting the signage out there to make that clear, particularly in the wintertime.
So, so you're saying trucks will still have access?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, so what, typically what occurs is the trucks will back in and deliver their goods to the businesses there, and then they'll do the three-point turn and make their way out. And so this parking restriction will just make that movement a little easier.
Okay, understood, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions for staff? All right, what is the pleasure of council in regard to this item?
Move to approve.
Moved by Raymond, is there support?
Support.
Support by Sol, any discussion? Seeing none, Brenda, which please call the roll.
Bird?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Sol?
Yes.
Rowan?
Yes.
Shay?
Yes.
And Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Great, thank you. Next item on the agenda, item 8C, Traffic Changes, Removal of Non-Compliant Crosswalk on 40th Street. Mr. Van Beek?
Mr. White?
Yeah, okay, so we've received a lot of comments on this, obviously, several comments came in before the meeting, obviously, we've all heard comments during the meeting, and I guess I just want to acknowledge a couple of things there with regard to that. Appreciate the comments, I think, you know, everyone shares a unique perspective and point of view, and particularly the gentleman that lives right next to the crosswalk, so thank you for the input there. I, I've had the opportunity to spend a fair amount of time out there, and basically just want to review from the Traffic Committee's perspective how we were looking at this. So as we get into that, I just want to clarify and make sure everyone is on the same page with where this is at. So basically, 40th Street's on the screen there, that crosswalk area highlighted in the circle, along with some of the driveways in the area. This is a street view of the crosswalk, and as commented tonight, it's not what I would call our typical crosswalk, it's kind of a unique situation, and I'd like to, to get in to that a little bit. So the existing elements of the crosswalk, you know, several of those elements are there. The, the ramps are there, some signage is there, but I, it's not up to current standards. And when you go back and did, we did some review with regard to 40th Street, when it was last built, how this got in there, reviewing the as-builts from that 2005 project, there were elements on those as-builts that referenced this. Some of those as-built, some of those elements were built, some of those weren't, and so it's a little bit peculiar as to how we got to this particular situation, and I think some of that... And I think some of that, um, as one of the comments referred to, may reflect, um, this addition of the fire access, um, that's kind of unique to this particular situation. Um, but then also, as I'll talk later in the slide deck, um, the standards at the time, uh, were in flux. And so I'll, I'll mention that in another slide, so, um, so that all may contribute to, um, where we're at currently with regard to, um, the situation we have out there, where, um, certainly there's elements of the crosswalk, but it's just not up to our standards. Yeah. Yeah, sure, sure. So the fire access, um, I think everyone can see the cursor there. Um, so this is the fire access.
Originally built as a fire access.
Yes, yes. Um, incidentally too, um, we've actually used that access, um, when we've had construction projects that don't allow that, uh, that development access out to Graskopf, we've actually used that fire access for vehicular access, um, on a temporary basis, but. So that's the fire access. Again, um, there are deficiencies out there. Um, when you look at ADA standards, you look at lighting, you look at signage, you look at pavement markings. Um, there's definitely, um, some deficiencies there. One of the things I want to go through is, um, a lot of discussion about, uh, doubling back and the, um, you know, how much extra time and, uh, distance is involved with regard to going to the, uh, to the side streets, Graskopf and Ottawa, and using those crosswalks, so I've got some slides with regard to that. Also use, um, we look at use, uh, and so we did spend some time out there, both in the AM peaks, uh, and the PM peaks. And basically, we structured those peaks around, uh, the school start and stop times. Uh, and so we'll share, uh, some of that information, um, in some slides, uh, following. The other thing too, um, and this is more, just on a more global level with regard to crosswalks, the context of these mid-block crosswalks, I think is important. And we really feel from the traffic committee's perspective, that the urban setting, you know, the downtown setting where speeds are slower and the crosswalk use is higher, we feel that these mid-block crosswalks are more appropriated, more appropriate for those kind of environments, and maybe less so for these more rural environments, where the use is lower, the speeds are a little bit higher, and there's some alternatives at the side streets. And so that's some of the things that the traffic committee took into account with regard to this recommendation. So the traffic committee, um, basically, um, you know, recognizes that, um, I think there's a, certainly a desire to either bring the, the mid-block crosswalk up to standards, um, or remove it, but certainly, uh, we shouldn't leave it as is. And so, so that's, um, you know, and we've heard different sides of that, um, uh, in the discussion tonight. The recommendation from the traffic committee is to remove it, um, and I want to just get into, uh, a couple of more of those slides. So, this basically, um, is a slide that represents the traffic volumes that use the crosswalks. And we included in our study, um, the crosswalks at Ottawa Avenue and the crosswalks at Graskopf. This is morning peak hour, and so basically this is from seven thirty to eight thirty. The orange, uh, numbers are basically from, uh, September twenty-three, and the green is from September twenty-five. And so you can see that mid-block crosswalk in particular is, uh, seven, um, crossings on the twenty-third and, uh, six, uh, on the twenty-fifth. You can see also just the volumes there for reference at those side streets. For afternoon peaks, and again, this is basically from two thirty to three thirty, um, we took counts on the twenty-sixth, that's in orange. We took counts, um, on the thirtieth, um, just yesterday, that's in green. Um, one of the things I'd like to point out too is, um, with regard to the twenty-sixth, that actually was a Friday night, uh, football game. And you can see there's twenty-two crossings at that north leg of the Ottawa intersection. Maybe I'll try and point that out right here. I actually think that was quite a few students heading over to Captain Sunday and, and coming back, so, um, a little bit, you know, you don't see that at, every time, but, uh, we think that was the case, uh, and the reason behind the little bump there that you see in that volume. So relatively speaking, when we look at crosswalks like this, MDOT looks at them, it, crossings, and again, per hour, right? Crossings less than twenty, um, and again, this is an MDOT guide, uh, typically are, are viewed as lightly used. And so MDOT, their standards would not recommend any of the, the actuated lighted treatments. Um, and basically, um, with regard to anything up to that point, signage, pavement markings, um, is really, um, the road owner's call at that point. Uh, and so, um, that kind of leads into the discussion about, okay, well, so, truly how much further, uh, would a, a pedestrian or bicyclist have to travel, uh, in order to get to that, that location? And that's what we're trying to demonstrate here with this, uh, this diagram. And basically, in the pink there, that's utilizing the crosswalk, uh, and the blue there is, is going around using the Ottawa Avenue crossing. And you can see that there's about four hundred feet there, uh, of additional travel path, um, that would be necessary in order to do that. With regard to the middle school, um, I think we're a little bit higher here. We're, uh, about five hundred feet, uh, of additional travel path, uh, to get to the middle school. Incidentally, um, where those paths are landing is the bike rack there at the middle school. There's actually a fair amount of, of the folks that utilize the crossing, I would say a pretty good percentage of those, typically two or three folks, um, are traveling on bike. And then finally, this is, this is a little trickier one, uh, with regard to the elementary school. Um, there is some double back, um, here, um, that I think you could, uh, cut into that if you were to put, um, uh, some improvements on the school site, uh, that would allow you to, um, to have a more direct route uh, into the school as opposed to having to go back to the, the sidewalk that's at the driveway. And then getting back to the standards, um, I just wanted to, to mention, and the standards were mentioned earlier today, but basically, the, the guides that we use, and this is the primary guide, is the Michigan Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices. Um, this manual has gone through several revisions. The revision that was in play, and, and the way the, the manual works is FHWA, the feds will put out, uh, a new manual edition, and then it typically takes a year or two for the state of Michigan and the individual DOTs to approve that. And so one of the things that was going on when Fortieth Street was originally constructed is we were right in the middle of a, um, an update. And so again, whether that played into, um, how we got that crosswalk that was kind of missing some elements, again, i- it's anyone's guess to say that. In addition to some of the other things that were going on with the development and the fire lane and things like that, so. So again, I don't really know, don't have the history per se specifically, but just, uh, again, trying to piece together, okay, why, why do we have half a crosswalk here, so? So that could be, uh, um, part of the reason. Um, we went through some additional updates, two thousand and nine, two thousand and eleven, and then, uh, the most recent one is two thousand and twenty-three. Um, that is yet to be approved by MDOT, um, but we do anticipate within the next month or so, two months, that, that that will be approved without a whole lot of changes from the fed, uh, version. But one thing that I guess was emphasized in this later version, it does give some flexibility with regard to the kinds of treatments that are used at these crosswalks, but it really has an emphasis on ADA standards. And so I think, you know, should we decide to maintain the crosswalk, I really think, um, that we want to zero in on that um, and make sure that that gets addressed. Um, and that is more than, um, some minor treatments. Um, there is, and I'm going to go back here. Um, on the north side of the crosswalk, left side of the, the page, that landing is at about eleven to twelve percent grade. Um, that's too steep. Uh, so if we were going to update this crosswalk, there's a fair amount of work, uh, involved in, uh, getting that slope corrected in ADA compliant, so I just want to point that out. Uh, some additional observations and, and wrapping things up, I know I've been going on here for a little bit. Just having spent some time out there, and I think this echoes, you know, some of the things that, that have been brought up. Um, when I spent some time in the, in the crosswalk and at the ramps, um, there's a lot of vehicles that just don't stop. And so, I guess one of the good things that I would like to point out is, generally speaking, the students, I think, do a pretty good job of paying attention and watching for traffic and waiting for traffic, particularly the older kids. Um, and so I would encourage folks, um, to continue those habits, particularly the kids. Um, and it doesn't matter if it's at a mid-block crosswalk or at a regular crosswalk at an intersection. I think it's a good habit. I'm glad the kids are, uh, demonstrating that, um, uh, that sense, basically. Um, and I think, um, it, uh, it definitely helps make the whole situation, um, better with those kids doing what they're doing, so. Again, the, the recommendation, uh, tonight, uh, from the traffic committee, um, is to remove the crosswalk. Um, and basically with the understanding that, um, we would hope that those kids that would normally use the crosswalk would go to those side streets, Ottawa, Graskopf, and utilize those, uh, to get to their ultimate destination, understanding that there is a few hundred more feet for the travel path. But that, that crossing, and, and this is, um, uh, been documented, you know, traffic engineering and engineers, our traffic engineer acknowledged that a crossing at those stop-controlled intersections is much safer than a crossing at, uh, a mid-block, so. So with that, that's the recommendation before you tonight, and happy to answer any questions or field any comments.
Questions for staff. Mr. Shay?
Thank you, Brian. Uh, I'm going to start by saying emphatically that, uh, knowing you personally, I am very certain that you and I have a very shared interest in safety. And if anyone doubts that or doubts my feeling towards that, I will happily vouch for your pure intentions. Um, I want that to be very clear.
Right.
Um, and I also, uh, as we know, anybody who spends time thinking about traffic safety and things, um, that there's, there's two camps and there are spots in between, right? And, um, I'm not suggesting, I don't know where anybody sits, but, um, I do sit at, um, a more friendly pedestrian, posture, um, so I will just start off with that. There's no mystery for most, but, um, a couple of questions. One is, do we have a cost to remove the curb cuts?
We, we haven't calculated that up. Um, it's going to be pretty minor, um, to remove that.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
And what, and you have, you did touch on this, but I'd love, just in a kind of a real quick exhaustive list, maybe not exhaustive, but, of, i- in what ways are we not in compliance or conformity?
Yeah, sure, sure. Um, so, and I, I'll, let me just go back to the slide. So, um, obviously pavement markings, right? There's no pavement markings currently there. Um, the signage, and again, there's a little bit more flexibility in the MMUTCD under current standards, but we would want to bring this up to what we normally do at a mid-block, so there'd be some signage additions that we would do here. Um, you can see, another thing too is the streetlight, uh, that illuminates the areas, actually, this, this, and again, this, it's peculiar how this got into where it did, because it basically is smack dab in the middle of the streetlights. Um, so were this to stay, we would want to make adjustments to those streetlights, at least one of them, to get some illumination down on the crosswalk. Um, probably the biggest thing, though, is that, that ramp, that north ramp that slopes down to the sidewalk. All that infrastructure needs to be raised, and that slope needs to be ADA compliant. That may seem simple, but you have to take into account restoration, sprinklers, ev, you know, all the stuff that, the whole, um, thing gets opened up when you start digging, so. Um, yeah, and, and it's not a small adjustment, right? It's a pretty significant, it's a foot plus that that has to go up. So, certainly not insurmountable, but it's definitely, uh, something, again, that we would strongly recommend were we to keep this in place.
And I appreciate that. I also will say that I als, I am, similarly, I don't see the, just staying the same as a good option.
I, I, we don't.
So, um, you know, I just, I've, would, looked through the, um, uh, non-motorized plan. Just a few things I want to kind of point out from it. And it says, uh, mid-block crossings are usually located at places where people wish to cross, but the existing infrastructure is not well-serving. These crosswalks are popular for roadways near key points such as schools, parks, and other facilities. Big thing was pedestrians typically cross the street at a point where it is most convenient, um, you know, and, and their point of travel. I also, I, I take your point with some of the diagrams of, uh, distances and things, but I also think people are probably cutting through parking lots and so, and things like that if they're on foot or on a bike, so just kind of something to consider. You know, I've, I've explored some different options that I'm, I would love to talk to you about in general sometime, about how you see them having weaknesses and strengths. Um, but I just, I would, I worry about the idea of, I really appreciate the process of us having this conversation and not just jumping on it, like you mentioned before. Um, I really don't like the idea that a, a, a member of the public came and wanted something improved, and we're going to not take it away. Um, and so I'm sure you can appreciate that. I think that's basically, um, my thought on things, and if anybody has any questions on my take, I'd be happy to answer them, but, um, I appreciate your work, Brian, I do, um, and so, um, thank you.
Other questions for staff? He was, I think he was pointing at you.
Thank you, I appreciate the courtesy. Um, a couple of little quickie, easy ones. You said something, um, MDOT does not recommend any lighted treatment. Oh, is, does that mean flashing light, or are you talking about like a stop?
No, um, so, um, then everyone references Ninth Street, right? So that's, uh, an, actually, if you are familiar with Ninth Street, there's push buttons at these mid-blocks, and they activate these.
Okay.
We call them RRFBs, rectangular rap, rapid flashing beacons. Yeah, so, um, I think that's what a lot of folks are referencing. And MDOT, their view on that, uh, and it's through a paper, and I, we can certainly reference that paper, but basically, those really are generally for volumes, pedestrian volumes, that are twenty or more per hour, um, and we're obviously less than that, so.
And you mentioned that in your presentation as well. I just wanted to know what you meant by the lighted thing.
Yes, yeah, that would be it.
Um, another easy one, the, you referenced the element, when you had your, um, distance map of going around and all of that, the elementary school, um, you said perhaps they might need some modifications in order to, um, close the distance, cut through something. Um, I assume that's what you meant, like not having to cut through a lawn, maybe, um, they would create some sort of path, that blue one on the?
Cor- correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Have you approached this, I mean, it, uh, you didn't approach the school already on that?
We have not.
Okay, but if this were to go forward, perhaps that would be a discussion that the city would be involved in to, to help make it easier?
Sure.
Okay. And then I'm concerned about the gentleman's comment, um, I forgot who it was, but somebody said something about the kids would probably still cross there. Does your committee look at that type of thing, like, okay, we get it, what you should and shouldn't?
We do, and, and I, I would say that's a, that's a valid, uh, point that's brought up. And I think that goes back to, to, um, if, we'd probably be having a different discussion, or maybe no discussion, if the schools were at the crosswalk, um, and that it, you know, if. if the schools were at the crosswalk, and that, you know, if it was conducive, if the node was there. In this particular case, the Traffic Committee recognized that the both schools, all three schools, have those borders at Graskup and Ottawa. And that's what influenced the Traffic Committee, and the idea that it's only a few hundred feet in many cases, and we feel that that's doable, right? That that's not as much of a hardship for the individual user. Valid point about whether they would use it or not, we would hope that they would use those side streets to cross.
I don't know, do you ever go so far as to try to interact with the schools in such an instance to help them, like educate them, to give warnings to kids, like, hey, this crosswalk that was here is no longer here? Is that something that can be undertaken?
Yeah, yeah, I think it is. And we haven't had those discussions yet with the school. I did, I basically just checked in with all three schools when we were doing the counts, just to let them know, hey, we're out there, we're doing counts, and give us your, you know, start times and end times. But that's where the conversation ended at that point, so.
And then I just have a general comment, that I will be voting in favor of removing this crosswalk. My specific reason for wanting to vote yes to it is, we had that earlier discussion about Sixteenth Street by Heinz. That's kind of like a thoroughfare, and as I said, I pass that multiple times a day to and from work, and I see people don't stop. They don't, and there is a painted crosswalk, and it's much less distance, and it's not a fast road, not really. Especially when you gotta weasel around West Michigan trucks there all the time, too. So my concern is that this is really, this is a long straightaway, and you can really get cruising on this one, and kids in the middle of a block where, you know, not every driver is gonna, I look for the crosswalks. And when somebody's anywhere near a crosswalk waiting to cross, I stop well in advance, and I let them get through the whole crosswalk. I don't even wait for them to just go on half of it, unless I'm driving in Chicago and I need to turn left real fast, then I go. But anyhow, I don't know that people take good care to be courteous to people crossing in a valid crosswalk, much less sort of a crosswalk like this. Even if you were to make improvements, I still have concerns. I think it's in the middle of a block, it doesn't make sense to me. I'll be voting yes for this tonight. Thank you. Thanks for your hard work on it.
Thank you.
Ms. Raymond and then Mr. Byrd.
If you were to improve the crosswalk, what would, how would the signs change?
Yeah, so, let's go over there. Yeah, so the signage as it stands right now, and there's a lead-in sign, right, in advance of the crosswalk, and then there's the sign right at the crosswalk. So there'd be some additional signing on that same post that has an arrow down pointing to the crosswalk. I think these signs were put in about three years ago, so I think from a retro reflectivity standpoint, they're still in good shape. But that additional placard for the down arrow would be here. The other thing that we have done at these mid-block crosswalks is, we call them shark teeth, but basically the triangles that are painted on the pavement where we want the cars to stop, and then there's some signage that comes along with that, you know, basically yield here to pedestrians, I think is what that sign says. But so there's that that would accompany what's out there now in terms of signage.
It seems like that would make, the yield to pedestrian signs seems like that would make, that makes a difference. This feels like, hey, watch out, there might be people, and the cars would be more inclined to drive through. I keep thinking, we keep calling this a crosswalk, and I think it's not even that, like it feels like we're giving it more. You know, I completely agree that it can't stay the way it is, for sure.
You know, the other complicating thing here, and again, this may be part of why we ended up here, but to have a crosswalk double as a fire access really is not ideal. Now, it is a fire access, right? It's rarely used, but, you know, typically you don't have pedestrians crossing into driveways, you don't have pedestrians crossing into things like temporary fire accesses.
Mr. Byrd?
Yes, this is, I wish we would have put this on a study session. I think there's a lot that goes into this and understanding, you know, just, I got so many different thoughts and ideas and things. One is, and some of these things have been touched on already, but conversations with the school. I know, for instance, Holland Public has a very, I would say, robust crossing guard army, if you will. I have not seen that for Holland Christian. I don't know, the majority of those, if not all, one hundred percent for Holland Public are volunteers. And I don't know what those schools have done, or had conversations, or willing to do that. I think that would help alleviate a lot of the issues that we're talking about right now. The other thing is, I look at, so for me, safety is paramount. I get so frustrated when I'm driving in a car and I see a young parent, maybe it's not even a young parent, I don't wanna just blanket statement, but when I see a parent or an adult walking with a young child, and that child is five feet from them, and they're on their phone. Like, I lose, I lose my poop, if you will, when I see that, because kids have no concept of danger, right? And I've seen incidences where that hasn't turned out well. And so that's where I'm coming from, is safety for our kids. You made the comment that they have good habits, and most of them do. And the majority of those kids who have good habits are the older ones, right? But again, I'm coming from the viewpoint of those younger ones. Those younger ones don't know danger. They're not paying attention. I mean, I, so I took my oldest, a quick segue, just to, like, brain-wise for kids. Took my oldest son, who was now thirty, to Applebee's. One of my favorite desserts in the world is a blondie. Comes out on a hot skillet, and then they pour the glaze on it. I said, "Don't touch it when it comes out, it's gonna be hot." They set it on the table, and I see him do this, and I'm getting ready to say something, but I don't say anything. And I watch him, and he burns his finger. So my son now, is, my youngest son is sixteen, and I tell him the story about his older brother. And I say, "Ethan, don't be like your older brother and touch the skillet when it comes out," 'cause I took him to Applebee's, too, for the dessert, 'cause again, I like the blondie, it's really good. And it comes out on a hot skillet, and I watch him do the exact same thing his brother did. After, I told him, "Don't do it," and I got a good laugh out of it. But at those younger ages, they don't think about the danger. They don't think about the consequences. And I think that's where it's paramount, that we do that for them. And I am all in for modifying that area. When these kids see that area, because it's not really gonna be any different if we move it, right? Than it is now. We get rid of it, like, we see the road, there's not much signage, they just know that's an access point. They're never going to correlate, "It's gone now," and they're gonna be crossing that. And then that takes me to summertime, right? We don't have crossing guards, we don't have the signage, we don't have anything there. And in the summertime, there's a playground, there's baseball fields, there's all this green space for kids to go play and have fun. And it's another opportunity, right? And they're going to cross there regardless of what we say. And I think the best thing for us to do is to put bumpers there for them, in essence, to make sure that they are safe. Because I believe, as a leader in the city, that is one of my highest responsibilities. And, you know, I, it stinks, and I completely understand the other side of this, too, but I lean towards that side. And then I think about the individuals who have made this a concern in their lives. And just the perception now, this is only perception, because as Devin stated, we know, like, taking this away, it's about safety still, right? It's not about, you brought this to us, so now we're just gonna take it. There is no underlying devious activities or anything along those lines. This has been thoroughly vetted, looked at, we have some data to back that up. But I don't want people to get the idea and thinking that also if I bring another issue up to the city that they just might, instead of enhance or do, make it look better, or this or that, they may just take it away. And I think that's something real to think about as well. So I know I said a lot, but I will not be voting for an agreement with this.
And just to stay with Robert's rules, was there a question there for staff? No, all right, well, we'll let it, we'll let it go this time.
Actually, actually, there is a question for staff. If we were to modify this, do we have a cost to that?
Again, we really haven't put pen to paper on that, but the items that I mentioned to you, right, those would be the ingredients that we'd be talking about. And not insignificant, right, but not insurmountable either.
Good. I think it's fair to say, Quincy, Brian, absolutely correct me if I'm wrong, the signage, the putting the paint on the pavement, those types of things, which I think is part of the conversation, 'cause it's tough, right? Those are relatively insignificant. It's the ADA in getting that. That's a larger thing, which, you know, is doable. We're not, but I think understanding that that was part of the tough call on this one, too. So just for information.
Lynn?
What control do we have on the, for the speed limit on that road?
Yeah, fair question. So I did look back, and we did a speed study back about ten years ago. It was signed thirty-five, it's been signed thirty-five for quite a while. That eighty-fifth percentile was a little bit above thirty-five, but with the traffic and the speed limit regulations that are in place, we were able to keep that signage and keep that speed limit at thirty-five. So we're right in that same neighborhood with regard to the eighty-fifth percentile. I can tell you anecdotally, and, you know, as what was referenced, there are certainly outliers, right, where we've seen it, where you've got one or two vehicles that wanna test the speed limit. But I would say by and large, and particularly in the morning, there's a lot of traffic there, but it does seem to be, you know, not too crazy with regard to speed limit, so. But that was, that speed study was done, I think it's 2011, possibly, plus or minus a year.
So I have, then I have like a process question. If, so if, so my inclination is to want to improve the site, but if we, what we're voting on is whether to remove it. So I'm just, just to, how, I mean, we can save this question till later if it makes sense, but I'm just wondering how we word that if, or if there's an additional motion.
You could make a motion to not accept the recommendation of staff and send it back to staff to make another recommendation on improving. Ms. Hall?
Thank you, Brian, for all your work and to the Traffic Committee. And thank you for those who came out and, you know, gave their public comment. We value your thoughts and your time. For me, I think the speed limit was the first question, because you said in the city, at Ninth Street where people have referenced the, what were they, the RFPs? What is, say the definition again, I'm good with that.
Yeah, rectangular rapid flashing beacons.
Okay, okay. So that being said, and there is a difference between the rural and this, in the city, and we have higher volume at Ninth Street. Definitely, I think what I heard is when this was created, it was created for fire access, not so much the pedestrian. Is that accurate?
I don't know. I wasn't here at the time in 2005 when it was built. And I don't know why it was built, the way it was built, right, because it is a little bit peculiar. We have kind of a half of a crosswalk here.
Okay. That being said, for me, I, with all the public comment, I wanted to vote no. But then after I started thinking about what we do here in Holland, when we do something, we do it right. Matt says that all the time, you know, if we're gonna do something, we're gonna do it right. And so for me, I'd have to vote yes today because it's not safe. And if I learned anything in the Army, it was safety, safety, safety. And, you know, I think the standard has not been met. And if the standard has not been met, that's a reason alone that we can remove it. I too agree with Lynn, if we could, you know, as we did, as you're giving time to the earlier, the Heinz Crossway, if we could do that, that would be great to see how we could improve it. But first and foremost, I think we'd have to remove it because it's not safe. You know, the lighting, the signage, you know, even to say accessible, I think you said the MDOT, they won't have their final ruling until sometime this year, or you're not sure when, to update it to standard to code. So for me, I think hearing the public's concern, you know, the Army Training ME, safety, 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 we definitely have to remove it, and then perhaps see how we can improve it. You know, Keith mentioned, reiterated that some of those things aren't that, you know, significant, but the accessible, the grade was a big thing. I think you said it was at the slope of eight, and it needed to be higher?
Yeah, so the slope on that north side's between eleven and twelve percent, and the maximum standard's eight point three for ADA, so.
So I really appreciate the people that spoke, the gentleman that lives right in front, Mr. Burley, I believe it was. You know, I appreciate what you do, but I also too agree that, you know, the schools, Holland Christian, today I picked up my daughter, my granddaughter at Black River Public School, and my son graduated in, oh, he's twenty-five now, so anyways, it's different. And they did some improvements, you know, not what I was used to, but, you know, again, like Quincy said about Holland Public Schools, and I live by Vanderbilt, and there are cross, they should call them patrols. I mean, I wanted to be a patrol person to help cross. I wasn't selected, but anyways, I'm not bitter. But so those, you know, those things, I know we have a staff, too, and they're always looking for crosswalk, but maybe that's something that we can collaborate, we do really well collaborating. But also today, NPR was talking about, so if you guys think, or the audience and my colleagues, vehicles are not stopping for buses, so if they're not stopping for buses, I mean, it was just reported on NPR, Orchard View School Superintendent said they got some grant money to upgrade their cameras. Then enhanced footage reveals an alarming number of dangerous situations when cars speed by buses picking up or dropping off students, butts, lights flashing, stop signs out. So with our new cameras, we are able not only to see the car has passed, but to record the car, sometimes get the license plate, and sometimes get a pretty good image of the driver. So that being said, these are all legitimate concerns. But our top priority here in Holland, we've always, you know, the standard and at least the standard, but above the standard. I think that's what we like to promote, the walkability. I am all about walkability, accessibility. Um, I am all about, um, walkability, accessibility, but not at the, um, um, risk of, you know, that, that, um, the word that you said, false sense of security. For me, safety comes first and we need to do it better, we need to do it right because it's not right right now. Um, so I think that today I'm voting yes to remove it. But I would hope that with all the projects that we can come back and look at it so that it meets standard, it meets, you know, the MDOT. It's, it's a better, um, uh, better solution than what we have right now. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Shea, did you have something?
Yes, uh, sorry if this is a little inside baseball, so I'll explain a little bit. I had asked, um, the Community Neighborhood Services and also Keith about, uh, the PUD that is that neighborhood. I'm curious, I just know that a, a lot of times with PUDs, there are conditions and it kind of almost seemed like maybe one of the conditions could have been the crosswalk. Did we definitively find that that is not the case?
Yeah, we, and again, same type of thing, I don't think there's, there's staff that goes back that's like, oh yeah, I remember that. Um, but from everything that I heard and looking at documents that we had, this was first the fire easement. Um, and reference the walkability really going out the other way. And, um, even action by this council, I was here when we did this. Uh, there, we were at a point, at one point of almost losing that easement. Um, and we worked kind of something else that happened in Cobblestone um, to retain this easement for the fire. But then we also look at it as a positive that there's that pedestrian there. So, take that as it would, right? No one's saying we wanna get rid of the easement, the, the pedestrian access back into the, into Cobblestone. Um, and it might be different if there wasn't the, um, the sidewalk on the south side of the street. But no, I don't thi- I, I haven't seen or heard anyone say, oh yeah, this crosswalk was part of approving Cobblestone when Cobblestone went in. And again, I, like, I think everyone's saying this is a, this is a tough one, there's different points of view and everyone wants safety, it's just a matter of how, how do we obtain the safest situation? You guys get the tough ones sometimes.
Other questions for staff? I've, I've got a couple, um. Devin, you mentioned two camps, I fall in both of them. As a, as a pedestrian, I love mid-block crossings when I wanna use them. As a driver, I absolutely hate them, um, because they're, because I'm always worried I'm gonna hit somebody. Um, I drive the, the same route that Ms. Rowan does quite often, past Heinz. Um, and have had, even though I am very, very vigilant through there, have still had way too many close calls with folks who've stepped out quickly in the dark, um, to the point where I've trained myself to not go down 16th Street anymore. I, I diligently avoid that block. Um, I used to go down this block, uh, when I lived in this neighborhood, I went down this block. Don't tell my wife, but I had a very bad McDonald's for breakfast habit, uh, that I went down 40th Street almost every single morning, uh, to the point they knew my order. But again, don't tell my wife. Um, and, and almost never saw this crosswalk. I knew that it was there because I had friends who lived in Cobblestone, I knew that their kids used this. Um, and I still, and over the course of the last couple of weeks, have deliberately driven down 40th Street and have missed it every single time I've gone by when I've been looking at it. This is an untenable crosswalk in the way that it is right now. We all know what we would like people to do. Um, we all wanna, we all want people to be safe, um, whether they're the pedestrian or whether they're the driver. Um, the question is what are they going to do? Um, and we've talked about what do you, what do you do to make this a good crosswalk? Um, we've talked about removing this to, to, um, to prevent people from going there. But I, I agree with the gentleman, uh, who lives next to this that, um, I think people, and Quincy, I think people are still gonna continue to use this. And, and that frightens me, that really does. And so my question is, is there more that we have the ability to do other than just removing the curb cuts and the aprons um, to prevent people or discourage people or retrain people to keep them from crossing there? You know, is there a, is there a barricade of some sort? Is there a fence of, is that, is that something we can do? Is that, does that make any sense at all?
It does, it does. So the unique thing with that is that this also doubles as a fire access, right? So with regard to that south side, I don't think we wanna put a barrier there, right?
Yep, you're right. Okay.
But yeah, I mean, I think you see that on, on a lot of college campuses, right? Where there's a lot of pedestrian movements and they kinda guide with fencing, right?
Right, right, yeah, but you're right, we got, you're, you're right. For the moment, I forgot about that. We've got a, we've got a fire access. We need to be able to get those fire vehicles in there if they're necessary. Um, yeah, and, and as we've all said, safety's the issue here. And it is, you know, can we create a safe pedestrian crossing? Can we create a safe non-pedestrian crossing here? And what's the best way to be able to resolve that issue? Those are my questions. Any other questions for staff? You, you had one, you forgot it. All right, what, what is the pleasure of, yeah, Ms. Hohl?
So if we, so if we did take, um, it off, um, and did, wait a minute. I, I know I am getting a little ahead of myself. So if we, per Lynn's comment, um, or I think you said if we take it off or we vote for it with coming back, right, but right today, we're just, I'm just a little unsure about how I would say, like, I would be interested in removing it for tonight because it's not safe. But then perhaps John.
If, if you were interested in removing the crosswalk tonight, you would vote to accept the recommendation of staff?
Okay.
Well, but I also think, like, I think what you're saying, Belinda, is that, um, we can, can we do this now?
Yeah, yeah.
I'm not sure that removing it and then improving it is a, is a possibility. Right, you'd either have to say, or if you, if you don't wanna, if you want it improved, you, I, I'm imagining you'd have to say no to the recommendation.
That's exactly why I wanted to do this now, because I wanted staff input on that. Yes, yes, we'll, we'll allow staff to answer that, that was in the form of a question.
Yes, um, we would, we would not recommend, like, temporarily removing it to take a look at other options and then improve it. And I mean, this is, this is critical. I mean, I think everyone recognizes it, it shouldn't continue the way that it is. And yet there is an element where it's been this way for a while, so, like, with all due diligence and speed, like, um, depending on the vote that you either take tonight or if I could, similar to what happened, um, on 16th, like, sensing the conversation and helpful, like, to, to help be more clear, we could also come back with kind of like an either or. Like here are, bring it up to standard with at least things that we would say, hey, these, it can't stay the way that it is, so either this or rem- or take a look at what even removing it would look like practically. Does that make sense? So, so you, so if you wanted to, you could take a similar action as you did on 16th. I was blanking on the number of the street there. And I think staff is pretty clear, right? Like, we would, we could come back and say, hey, here, here are bringing it up to standards with the things that we've identified. Honestly, probably still fall short of some of the things that some people would like to see us put out there, but bringing it up to standard. That would be an option that you could direct us to do also.
And procedurally, that would be a motion to postpone.
And I think motion to postpone with direction.
Mr. Bird? Nope, okay. What's the pleasure of council?
I move to postpone item 8C, removal of non-compliant crosswalk on 40th Street, pending, um, more information, I guess, from, uh, staff.
Is that enough direction, staff?
I think we have a pretty clear vision.
All right, we've got a motion, do we have support?
Support.
Motion by Bird, support by Raymond, any discussion?
Yes.
Yes, Ms., Ms. Rowan?
I think we've collected a good deal of information tonight. I don't think it makes a lot of sense to postpone. Um, school is in session, this is an excellent opportunity to educate kids and reframe their thinking about this street. Um, I'm not in favor of postponing. Thank you.
Any other discussion? And I, I actually agree with, with Ms. Rowan, I'm not sure that there's a way to be able to create a safe crossing here. Um, I think that what, what needs to happen is that this crossing does need to go away and I think that we need to work to, um, to train, train our kids to not cross in the middle of a big, long block like this. Um, so I would be voting no on the, on the motion to postpone. Yes, Mr. Shea?
Um, and if I may, I just, I, this is a tricky one. I wanna add that I, by no means think that this is a slam dunk. Um, but I do want to just point out that, uh, a lot of this discussion has been from the perspective of when I'm driving, I don't see this, or when I'm driving. It's from the, been a lot of discussion from the perspective of the driver. We talk a lot about increase in livability and I, I just think that the idea that the crosswalk isn't right for the road is one way to look at it. Um, but maybe the road isn't right for the crosswalk. I'm not suggesting a whole reconstruct of the road by any stretch of the imagination. Um, but, you know, little things like, um, and, and I, I wanna say I'm kind of speaking to maybe this, but also future discussions, um, you know, looking at little things like a flex bollard in the center of the, you know, the center line or, um, some more tactical, um, things like that that are low cost, um, you know, rubber, um, uh, islands at the, in the middle of the road for pedestrians to stop at and pause. And, and there are a lot of things to talk about in that regard. So, um, however this, this goes, this evening and this vote goes, what I think is really important for us to, as council people, to leave thinking about really seriously is, um, how we talk about crossing and pedestrian safety and non-motorized safety uh, going forward in, in other discussions in the future. So, I really do appreciate this dialogue, I think we have a really great, great hash out here. So I appreciate it and I, once again, thank you to Brian and his team, um, with all emphasis. Thank you, thank you.
Any other discussion? All right, seeing none, Brenda, would you please call the roll? Yes?
Okay, uh, Raymond, yes. Soul?
So we're voting to remove the?
We're voting, voting to postpone with, uh, recommendation to staff to come back with other options.
No.
Rowan?
No.
Shea?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Mayor Box?
No.
Tied.
We haven't done this in a while.
Well, the, the motion fails to, number one, receive a majority. Um, any motions for, by council for resolutions or ordinances require five votes in the affirmative. Uh, this was a procedural vote, I believe, so it still fails for failing to achieve a majority.
So, where does that leave us, Vince?
Um, if, there, there's, uh, that motion fails, so there's. Could be other motions made.
We still have the, we still have the item in, in front of us then?
There could be, if there's a motion made, then that item could, would be in front of council.
Okay, so.
Motion to approve the original motion of removing the crosswalk, the non-conforming crosswalk on 40th Street.
So, motion to accept the recommendation of staff, is that?
That would, yes.
Okay. Just to, just to follow our, our.
Our form.
Our format with that to make sure that we're.
Thank you, Mayor, I appreciate that. Let me restate, motion to follow the recommendation of staff.
Motion by Rowan, is there support?
Support.
Support by Soul, any discussion?
If I may?
Yeah, absolutely.
I would assume that, uh, if we were to decide to keep this, that because it is not conforming, that our fantastic staff would seek to make it conforming. I'm just making that, that is my assumption. I'm not putting words in anybody's mouth, that's just what I'm thinking while I'm voting. Thank you.
Any other discussion, Mr. Bird?
Yes, I, I, maybe I missed this, um, but the motion is to get rid of this, right? What activities would constitute us getting rid of this? What, what, what is that? What does that consist of?
Yeah, and again, this is a good, so basically the sidewalks would remain. Um, that, uh, landing, the ramps would go away and then we would, uh, basically put high back curb where the dub down is currently. The signage would then be removed as well.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. It's me over here quietly in the corner.
Oh yeah, sorry.
Misstated this, but the south apron would remain.
You're correct, you're correct, yeah, again, that fire access, yeah. Thank you, Matt, for clarifying that. So it would just be the north.
All right, we've got a motion in a second, any other discussion?
So again, that leads me to, the traffic is usually coming from the south or coming from the area where we are going to keep that pad, right? That, that's where the majority of that traffic probably, that foot traffic, the pedestrian traffic would come, so. I just wanna point that out as well. Because again, I really believe regardless of what we do there, outside of building a wall, they're still gonna, that, that access point is still going to be used, so.
Any other discussion? And, and Quincy, I don't, I don't disagree with you at all. Um, and I'm not looking at this from the perspective of the driver, I'm looking at this from the perspective of a pedestrian. I would not step out on that crosswalk. I wouldn't let my grandchildren step out on that crosswalk. Um, and if I, if I lived in that area, I would do everything I could to keep my kids from stepping out on that crosswalk. Um, because it's, it's not a safe crosswalk. There, there are safe places to cross, there are unsafe places to cross. I believe that this is an unsafe place to cross and I don't think that there is anything that we, reasonable that we can do to make this a safe place to cross.
I, I agree, but I, I told you the story of my sons and they are not exclusive, if you will.
Nope, I understand. Any other discussion? Brenda, would you please call the roll?
Soul?
Yes.
Rowan?
Yes.
Shea?
No.
Bird?
No.
Raymond?
No.
Mayor Box?
Yes.
We are tied again.
Similar answer, Mr. Mayor, uh, the motion fails for achieving five votes because this would be a resolution by council, uh, adopting a change in the traffic.
At what point do we move on? We need a, we need a motion to do something that we can all agree, that five of us can agree on. Yeah, all right, so our option, our options are to take action or to postpone, essentially.
The, yeah, the matter, matters can only come up by motion and a motion has been made and did not pass. Theoretically, the, you know, the reverse motion would probably be the same result with a 3-3 vote. It's, I think, you know, a motion to, to postpone for the dis- I think as a matter of course, it will, no matter is being acted on, so it would, would be postponed just by matter of course. It, it could always come back up at another.
Again, this, this does not happen, I, I don't recall this ever happening with us before. Um, we don't have the ability to just move on to the next agenda item. We have to address the agenda item that's before us in some manner, correct?
Well, it, it, it was addressed, it was a motion made and it didn't pass.
Okay, so, so we can move on to the next agenda?
Yeah, you, you all took action.
Okay.
But it, it wasn't, um, action that resulted in a favorable, uh, vote in, on the recommendation.
Okay, so we received a recommendation and we just said no?
Right, if the recommendation was multifaceted or had different components to it, then, but there was only one recommendation that I heard, so.
All right, thank you, thank you for that, I wanted to make sure that we were doing everything correctly procedurally. All right, next item on the agenda is item number nine, written petitions and communications. In addition to providing the public the opportunity to address us in person at our meetings, we also, uh, provide an email address, uh, that you can email us all and that is public. can email us all, and that is publiccomment@cityofholland.com. Again, publiccomment@cityofholland.com. When we receive those, we accept them into the record at our regular meetings, we do not read them out loud, but accept them into the record. We do have some this week, so I would entertain a motion to accept those into the record.
Move to accept into record.
Move by Byrd, is there support? Support by Rowan, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda that our HyAC student has been waiting patiently for is item twelve, Echo three point one, name change for Lakeview School Park. Mr. Van Beek?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. Andy Kenyon is gonna come up and lead us into this, but you are correct. Well, I won't steal the story, because I think this is a pretty cool story in how we landed at this recommendation, so take it away, Andy, and do our introduction.
All right, good, thank you, Keith, and Mr. Mayor and City Council, thanks for having us tonight. First of all, I'd like to introduce Maggie Talganoff, she's our HyAC student representing the Parks and Recreation Department and Commission, so she sits on our board. It's great to have her here tonight, we'll let her talk in a couple minutes. Second, I'd like to thank the Parks and Rec Commissioners for being here, and some of the Parks and Rec team as well, to be here to support her and to support this effort to rename Lakeview School Park. As you know, we have two parks in the city that are very similarly named. Over the course of years, we've had difficulty letting people know which park to go to, that's Lakeview Park, way out on the west end of town off of Bay and Black Bass, Lakeview School Park at Luger's and Thirty Second Street. Garrett Thalen was here earlier this summer talking about some massive improvements we've been doing at Lakeview School Park, and it is in the queue to become a very busy space. We're gonna improve the soccer fields, there's a new dog run there, we're improving the parking, we're adding more trees, so lots of stuff, very cool stuff, happening at this park. Along those same lines, while we've been talking about Lakeview Park and Lakeview School Park being confusing, we're gonna have more traffic there, let's try to come up with a new name for Lakeview School Park. So we talked about it as a team, and earlier this summer, we brought it over to the Parks and Recreation Commissioners for some ideas. We met with them early in the summer and said, hey, in a couple meetings, come back to us with a list of names, we will look at them collectively, we will have the commission vote on their top three, and then we will take those three back to the Parks and Recreation Team, where we would decide what name comes to the top of the list. Along those lines, many, many great names came about, all the Commissioners gave some input, including Maggie Talganoff, our HyAC student. This is exactly what we love about our HyAC students, the participation that she did at a meeting was awesome, and I don't want to take all the thunder, so if you're willing to, you want to tell the story of where we came up with Luger's Park, that was her idea, and that was the name that came to the top, okay?
Ms. Talganoff, welcome, it's good to have you here.
Hi, thank you. You guys ready for a little history lesson?
Absolutely.
Okay, so, I first off want to say that I'm super excited to be part of this renaming park process, and I originally suggested the name Luger's Park for a couple of reasons. The first one being the park is located right next to Luger's Road, so geographically it makes a lot of sense. But the second is that it's a little more personal to me. I'm a descendant of the Luger's family, and I think this renaming would be a great opportunity to showcase my family's history within the city of Holland. History lesson time. We begin with Benjamin Luger's, who immigrated here from the Netherlands in the eighteen forties and settled in Allegan County. He had a son Luke, Luke is kind of the big name for the actual Holland stuff. He settled a home and, like, homestead on what is now Luger's Road, which explains why it's named that. He served in various office positions for the Holland Township and Otto County, such as the supervisor of Holland Township in the eighteen nineties. He had a son named Benjamin, he had a son named James, James adopts my grandmother Marilyn Hofer. Marilyn Hofer, with her twin sister Janet Luger, co-founds the Luger's Family Foundation, which is a family-based nonprofit that works to help our community. We've done some recent donations to places like Mary Freebed, Holland Public Schools, and Kids Food Basket. My mom, Jennifer, is also a part of that, and one day, when I am old enough, I will hopefully step into that role as well. So, the reason that I think it's kind of cool and important to rename it to Luger's was that it's just a really cool opportunity to uplift families and people in our community that may not have otherwise received recognition for how they've helped shape our city and community. We've got the big names like Vinalti, but I think there are also a lot of small members of our, smaller members of our community that do a lot, so I think it's a really cool chance to recognize that, and I just am very grateful to feel so seen through HyAC, and yeah, I just think it'd be a cool opportunity to honor that, so.
Wonderful, are you willing to take questions?
Yeah.
Do we, do we have any questions for staff? Yes, Ms. Raymond?
Yeah, so was that history that you researched in order to come up with a name, or did you know your family history pretty well?
Yeah, so I knew the stuff about, like, obviously the foundation and Luger's Road being like settled there, but I did some research through, like, conversations with my family, but also online research for some of the, like, earlier stuff.
Any other questions for staff? Well done, well done.
Thank you.
It's, we know it's hard to, it can be scary being up at that podium, you did a great job, thank you, and, and great recommendation.
Yeah, I just, thank you very much. This is, this is a pretty significant thing to do, and I know you understand that, but renaming a park doesn't happen all the time. I've been with the city for twenty-five years, and we've had very few opportunities to do it, so it's very cool, and I'm super happy that Maggie's had an opportunity to, to help with this.
Well, don't get ahead of yourself, Mr. Kenyon, we haven't acted yet, so.
I'm just saying, if you choose to rename the park, Luger's.
So, that begs the question, what is the pleasure of council?
Move to approve the renaming of the park.
Move by Byrd, is there support?
Support.
Support by Soul, any discussion?
This, this is really cool, that's all, good work.
Yeah, a, a couple of things. First of all, Maggie, thank you, this is, this is really cool, and it doesn't surprise me it came from you, it really doesn't. You're a leader, and it's, it's pretty awesome. I just texted your dad a picture. So you'll probably hear about that, but I, I think it's really cool to see young people like yourself doing things in our community, like, who, who in high school gets to be a part of that, and let alone get to pick the name, right? So that's, that's really cool to see, and I hope that if this passes, that there is something that we could do with the high school to recognize her in front of her peers, her teachers, as a leader, as a person who's getting involved, and see the benefits of the kids doing that, to be able to want to do that themselves as well. And, that's it.
Any other discussion? Ms. Soul?
Thank you for the history lesson, and I'm just curious, did you use our Herrick District Library, is that information that, that they had on the books, I mean, or was it just in conversation with your family?
It was mostly in conversation, and then online, not, I didn't even think of that.
No, they had...
But I'd be curious to see if that is in that resource.
Yeah, definitely, because they have a whole genealogy and history there, so I just wondered if you used that, that resource. It's always been a curiosity of mine, but thank you to you and your family, and I appreciate your participation, and I think in the future, you know, in the future, you're gonna be sitting behind one of these, you know, microphones, so thank you for your participation.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Well done, this is, this is really, really exciting, and, and again, if, if we pass this, and I got a pretty good, pretty good feeling, it probably is going to. You're putting a permanent mark on the city of Holland, not, not only did Luke Luger's, but so did you. And you're gonna be driving by this park for the rest of your life, and you get to tell your kids, and you get to tell your grandkids, that you had something to do with the city of Holland, and making it truly your own, so well, well done, great job. Brenda, would you please call the roll?
Okay, and we'll start with word four, councilperson, where this is located.
Yes, voting yes.
Shea?
Yes.
Byrd?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Soul?
Yes, and I was just there today.
And Mayor Box?
Enthusiastic yes.
Passes unanimously.
Wonderful, congratulations, you give applause for that. Item number thirteen, and do not expect applause at the end of this, Mr. Van Beek, communications from the city manager.
I will go quick. One, just a reminder to everyone, join us for Collin Park Fire Station Open House, that would be next week, Wednesday, from five until seven, and actually, it'll go a little bit later than that, but councilmembers, I'm hoping you're gonna be back here at seven, because we have headly educational open houses. All of council knows this, but we have a pretty important question for the voters, that will be in November, and we have two educational open houses, Wednesday, October eight, and Tuesday, October twenty-one, both seven o'clock, right here in council chambers. Don't worry, it'll be short presentation, more question and answer, and it won't be as long as the city council meeting was tonight. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, appointments and communications from the mayor. I'm also going to be brief this evening, I just wanted to share another thing from the amazing Parks Department. I was invited to go on a ride yesterday, and something that I did not even know that our Parks Department did, but in conjunction with the Makatawa Area Express, our Parks Department picks up elementary students, elementary school students at their school, after school, and brings them to their soccer and football practices at West, so that their parents don't have to do that, or leave work, or if their parents have a difficult time doing that, and our amazing Parks Department invited me to take a little ride, and so we started at Longfellow, and we went from Longfellow to Holland Language Academy, and then went from there to Jefferson, and went from Jefferson to West, and I got to meet some amazing eight and nine-year-old kids who talked my ear off, including Crosby Orm, who sat right behind me and was amazed that I knew his mother, who worked, he talks a lot, he talks a lot, it was a base that his mother worked just down the hall from the mayor's office. And so, great job for the, the Parks Department in doing just another great thing that I think the people of Holland don't know is going on out there, our, our staff doing great work in the community and partnering with other organizations in the community, so well done. And that is all I have this evening. Next item on the agenda, appointments, motions, communications from councilmembers. Ms. Raymond?
Yeah, just, just quickly, I want to say, I'm, I'm sure we're all disappointed in that, that earlier vote that, that was rejected twice, because the result was what none of us wanted, was keeping it exactly the way it is. So I hope that we can revisit it at some point, at a study session, or, you know, I'm sure Brian, your brain is already working on, on what we can, what we can do, so I just wanted to make that note.
Any other motions, communications from councilmembers? Seeing none. Just one more motion, I would, no, I'm not gonna entertain that motion at this time, I'm sorry, I almost did. I would now entertain a motion to enter a closed session to review a written legal opinion from the city attorney. There is the possibility that there will be action by council following the meeting, so if you are interested in waiting in the lobby, you can do that. For those people who are watching online or on video, we will not be coming back on the video afterwards. If you are interested in finding out if we did have some action, and what that action may be, you can contact City Hall tomorrow morning. But I will now entertain that motion to enter a closed session to review a written legal opinion from the city attorney. Move by Soul, is there support?
Support.
Support by Raymond, any discussion? Brenda, would you please call the roll?
Shea?
Yes.
Byrd?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Soul?
Yes.
Rowan?
Yes.
Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great, thank you, and we'll just wait a moment to take a little break, yeah.